And I'm gonna lean a little bit on Oscar. I've lost him somewhere in the, in conversations between Oscar and Mr. Klein in regards to visits to the local 150. The idea about trying to provide classroom instruction, but then bringing simulators to the district so that we could begin to help support apprenticeship programs. At that point in time, it was my understanding that in part with the simulators and everything, a request to sign the policy for the responsible bid practices came into play. And that's when these discussions began. I was encouraged then to work with Terry Thornsberry and provided some data. But I also reached out to Breaman Schools, Dr. White, whom had also adopted something very, very similar to what the local 150 had provided to us. There, there are some differences, but there were also a lot of similarities. So with that began the conversation and looking at these policies and trying to tweak them to make them work for Rochester schools. Because Oscar and I believe are very much on the same page in regards to, I think Oscar even said one of the legacies he would like to create is not only a school that is prepared students academically with college credits and those opportunities, but also the vocational, technical track and recognizing that goal and wanting us to do that to the best of our abilities. At that point in time, started to do deep dives into CTE programs, funding, those types of things happened to assemble across Eric Fisher and his program and what he can do and bring to us. And we heard that last, at our last study session. And I think Oscar, something that you're going to receive more training on, even within the next couple of weeks, have been invited to some trainings that should also bring some opportunities and apprenticeship programs to the district as well. The question then became a level of working with Terry Thornsberry and having gone through several bid projects with him. And I will be the first to publicly apologize to Terry. When I first started this position, Terry came in and gave me the lowdown on bids and how to get the best bids. And we talked a lot about timing of bids, how long it takes leading up to the bids, trying to get the contractors when they're planning the next year's programming, all of those types of things. And have really learned a lot from Terry and going through multiple large projects within the district. So we'll lean on Terry for questions as well as the board unfolds, as conversations unfold. I think that based on the data we collected, I had plugged in a $300,000 minimum for this. I do, I have some questions as I dug deeper in. Terry clearly does as well. I took the Breamans' adoption and did the most work to it. There were a lot of similarities. One of the things that I will share that I took out of, out of the local 150s is in regards to the apprenticeship program, where it called for five graduates of the, of the program over the past five years. Breamans seem to have that apprenticeship program as a portion of that, which provided for board conversation and fulfilling that request that we have the apprenticeship as part of the bidding process. Then I tried to also make sure that we recognize that some of our best construction providers were ones that we have done work with in the past. They're not necessarily local, but they have provided some good projects for us. For example, Morrison Sun with the roofing projects. And I know Casey provided some language that we might be able to plug in here. But I was trying to think collectively about safeguarding the district to make sure that we grow an apprenticeship program, which is an integral part of this. And I want to make sure that Oscar and I recognize that while at the same time bringing as many bidders to the table as possible. So a couple of questions that I just have that maybe will help answer some of the board questions too. One would be for our attorney, Mrs. Adley, in regards to, is one or the other, if, if we start down this pathway and a policy or resolution is adopted and we find for some reason that maybe we don't have as many people come to the table to bid, does a policy or resolution lock us into something? Is it something that Terry and I can recognize and the administrative team and say, "Look, we only drew in two, two bids. They were well out of what we have budgeted. Can we try to open this up?" Or does that negate what we're trying to do? Is there one that's easier to walk back than the other? Are those conversations that you feel that we need to have? I just don't want to get to the table, not have competitive bids and have something that we can't change for future superintendents, future boards. Recognizing that we fully believe in the apprenticeship program and what we're trying to do and technical and vocational, what does this do on Todd and I's end on the budgeting financial side? So Lauren, is one, is it possible to walk both of those back in a worst-case scenario?
Both a resolution and a policy can be walked back in similar ways. Resolution, you're essentially making a new resolution, which is you're sending all or part of the former one policy. You can change the policy or you can just cancel the old policy. Both options require new action from the board.
With, so then with that, as I was reading through the language, and I have not had this conversation with anybody at the table, when we're talking about bidding then, the way that this is worded is that for all bids that come in, not all bids reach the level of board action per se? Would all bids then have to go through all of these steps?
Depends on the language of the policy or resolution.
And the reason I ask that is one, for example, Todd, one that immediately comes to mind is landscaping. We reached out to various landscapers. We wanted to get the best landscaping with the best bid that we could. It didn't rise to needing board approval, the threshold of the monetary about needing board approval. So we did seek competitive bids and went with. So I just wanted to make sure that anything placed in language here doesn't change what Todd and I do internally in regards to smaller scope projects, if that's making sense to everybody.
When I spoke about $300,000.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, this doesn't apply to anything under $300,000.
So those, they wouldn't have to submit all of these A3?
This doesn't apply to them at all.
Okay.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren? But I mean, that's what they're, says contractors proposing to submit bids on Rochester Community School Corporation project estimated to be at least $300,000 or more. Must prior to opening the bid, submit a statement made under of da-da-da-da-da and must include, and then it goes through A through like this.
Right, and then $300,000 and over, you could modify language in here to say which has to apply and which doesn't. But as of right now, the way this is drafted, we think $300,000 or more must comply.
How else can I? But I think that answers my questions. I know that there were still concerns that I hadn't changed the language to exclude, that we can work on, on that exclusionary language instead of the inclusionary language. I mean, we could do that right now. Jason's ready to do that. Should that be the direction that we want to go?
Are we, are we looking at, you mentioned RBP here? Are we looking at the one you drafted, the one you got from Breaman, right?
Correct.
Okay, I want to make sure.
So the one that I got from Breaman, with the biggest differential there is in regards to the apprenticeship and not having to have the five in five years. So it would be the one with the darkened, bolded header at the top.
Right.
Can you probably go to revisionist? I could ask the other question.
Sure, absolutely.
You guys keep disabling my video.
What?
My video keeps being disabled. Is there a wall by me because of wall? You guys aren't allowing it.
Scott's looking into that. Scott's on it. So I, I understand and support fully the goals that we together as a board set. And one of those was improving the CTE program, trades, apprenticeships, supporting that. And it seems like this was born out of discussions of that. So I have two questions. One is, do you feel that this is essential to supporting CTE and apprenticeship programs?
Are you asking me or?
Well, as our, as our superintendent, and I'm going to ask Oscar the same thing because I'm curious from an administrative point of view. Because you're the one that deals with this daily. You're the one that has that experience of having bids and big packages for years and years. You're the one who's been in the classroom. You've led a building and a corporation. You've spent a lot of time on this. Do you think this is essential to supporting apprenticeships?
I think that we can, and I need to rely on Oscar as well as he goes through conversations and training, that we continue to learn more about CTE programs. It's part of why we had Mr. Fisher in. I think that we can continue to grow internships and apprenticeships through the programs and the conversations that we continue to have with local businesses as well as the local 150 and, and conversations that we're having in regards to field trips, awareness, those types of things.
So is that, I know you're doing all those things and that is fabulous. Is this an essential part of that? Is this proposed policy or, or resolution an essential part of building that awareness and advancing that goal?
I would think, and I want to rely on Oscar who's in the trenches with it, that we could continue to move forward appropriately and build program and awareness without this document. But I want to.
So you use the word essential. I wouldn't say essential. Can it be a great tool? I don't know about the document, but, and I know, like Nick and I have built a pretty good relationship. And so there's some things there. When we first started talking, for example, you couldn't apply to the union until after our kids had been out of school for three to six months. I voiced that, I don't know how many times, Nick, I know. I don't know if I was the only administrator doing that. But then at the end of the school year, our kids could apply as they graduated. So that was something that I think came out of a relationship I have with him. Now, are we going to be able to see, get, get kids on equipment, see equipment and do things without that document? Yes. So I wouldn't say it's essential. Is it nice to have the collaboration with Nick and with the local businesses on top of that? Absolutely. But I think our CTE is going to go whether we have that document or not, if I was to give you an honest answer. But the relationship with the 150 is really nice as well. But I don't, that document has a lot more to do with the bidding process and the construction work than it will have to do with probably the influence in our classroom and exposure to our students, is how I would phrase that.
And I appreciate very much that that relationship has been cultivated and grown. And when Nick came and started, spoke our study session at the middle school, I asked, will, will our students still have opportunities if we choose not to adopt this? And he said, yes. So I don't know if that's changed or not, but at that, months ago, that was the answer. So that was the question I wanted to know about. Or is this was essential for advancing interna-, or apprenticeships? Because that is a worthy goal. The other thing is the bidding process. But is this, because the other thing I've been hearing is that this will protect the corporation at levels that we have not had protection before. And that's, I mean, I have my experience on the board and what's happened in the last five and a half years, but that's not my level of expertise at the same level that it is Lauren's or Janice's or Terry's. So I'd like to know from the three of you, your opinion, your professional educated opinion on whether this as presented, or maybe even with added exclusions, but still as presented, would be a helpful tool to, for the corporation? Does this help the corporation in the bidding process?
Lauren, if you want to start.
Legally, looking at this policy, this is extending the vetting process of those that are bidding. This is making sure that those that are bidding are good bidders that have the qualifications and the history and will do the job and will do it right. This vetting can happen without this policy if the school wants to. If the school bids a bid and says, okay, we like your bid, but please provide us with this additional information just so we can cross our Ts and D's. Outside of that, I don't know the history of bidding of the school to comment on that. But legally, this just looks like it protects the school because it vets the, the bidders rather well.
So based on that, Terry, can you share what's in this that we don't currently do?
Pardon? Okay. So I've read this a couple of times, but I read it again when you handed it to me. And this is very similar to what we do on the federal. We do a lot of federal work for the VA and a lot of these requirements are there. So I know what happens in those projects is it increases the cost of the project significantly because it's paperwork, it's, it's work, it's effort, it's. And contractors don't like to do paperwork. They, I have to tell you, sort of, we try to get additional information through current projects. We're talking about, you know, what I'm today said, "Why do you want me to do it?" It's like, "Because I asked for it." And it's a union contractor, but they didn't want to do it. He said, "Why should I bother?" I said, "Because I asked for it." And it's a, and it's in our specs and you have to do it if I ask for it. So he always has a choice. They're not promised it to me tomorrow. So the information regarding past projects, the information regarding all your business information, the certified payroll, and there's a lot of things in here we have to do. Because it's not typical for a case of project to do this. I, Forward Community Schools sets a bar when, when it comes to this stuff. I mean, it has been years long. Forward Community Schools, three years, next. They don't require all of this extra information. Because yes, they could protect you if there was an issue during the bidding process. It's just asking for more information from those contractors. But in the case of the things we do ask for, for the last 12 years of me working over here, we've never had an issue that this would have resolved. The issues we had with two contractors, both of which were union, had nothing to do with any of this information. It was, it was all lack of them being honest and truthful and doing enough and, and both of those contractors did it. Any non-union, any contractor will work and do that. If they're put hard, put in a rock and hard place, they may cut a corner, they may lie, they may do whatever. So this has nothing to do with that. This puts a bunch of work and effort up front for that contractor to provide us with what was, you know, half an inch thick envelope with information to an inch, two inches of information. And which they have to now pre-referenced of all of this information they're asking for on a regular basis to bid the projects. And so what can happen, much like the contractor I talked to today who bid on the Natatoria project, said, "I don't want to do this because I'm going to spend a couple hours it's going to take to put all that information together. Why should I bother?" They're going to look at this and the bidding requirements and may say, "I don't want to bid because I got to do all of this stuff." If they don't already do it, if they don't already have it there, then they're not going to want it. So in the case of the Natatoria project, we've asked for all of the breakdown bid information. And the contractor, actually in fourth place, was the first one responding to it too with them. Because he said, "All right, I'm fine." And he's a union, non-union chap. He does both. And then after that, I'm still paying for the pay. I was having with the three others to get the information. And so I gave him the deadline Wednesday and I hope to get it from him. But it's something as simple as that. Because they have that bid breakdown in order to put the bid together. So they have the information, but they have to manipulate it in a way that they present to me so I don't see all the markup and I don't see all the information, just see what they want to show. So it doesn't take long to do it. But if, if this then requires me to ask them, "Okay, in order to bid, you've got to provide me 10 more things that we don't normally ask for," they're going to charge you that. They're going to charge the school corporations that we ask. Certified payroll has to be done on a weekly basis. And so like this project, for instance, could be here. That's 52 weeks you're paying somebody for your certified payroll and give this information. But I don't, it's not up to me in the school system to do anything about a contractor not paying their people the right way. What are we going to do? We're not going to go interview the subcontractor over there in the corner working and say, "Hey, what are they paying you? Why do you do it?" Because it's not what we do. But that's what certified payroll is about. It's making sure that the contractors pay and subcontractors honest and fair creatures. But we're not going to get to that level. That's not, that's not what you guys pay me to do. And so I'm not going to follow you. And so they're going to submit all that information. Todd, I'm going to email it all to you and you're going to file it. Because I don't, I need it. It doesn't help to bid what I do as an architect and running the project. So that's a concern. The other concern I have and know it all too well, union wages are prevailing wages, which are higher than non-union wages typically, not in offices. But in most cases, no. And again, that raises costs. Having union and non-union contractors that have capable bidding against each other keeps things a little bit more even. Because it may force that union contractor to find a way to get their bid up a little bit if they're going up against the union contractor. It used to be in the state of Indiana required prevailing wage across the board. The non-union contractors did like to go up against the union contractors because they had to raise their pay scale in order to be competitive. And then they weren't competitive because that's not what they're going to get paid. So it became real hard for them to do it. The state of Indiana did away with it in 2015. So I came from a union household. I danced as a union contractor or union employee for 36 years in a business. And it worked great for him and benefited him and protected him. Life safety oriented him, so he is a factory worker. But in your guys' case, of all the school corporations I've ever worked for, we've never done this. And I reinforce what Oscar says. The relationships with the union and all of those things and the benefits of getting training and getting students to graduate and go off to work, those are all wonderful and great things. But does it require this to do that? That's my big question. And you said, "No, it, it doesn't." And I agree with you. It doesn't require this. I'm afraid that we're going to, number one, potentially not get bidders, which Janet alluded to. We've, we've had, remember we've come in, come to you a couple of times in bids, a few years back and saying, "We got one bid, we got two bids." Nobody's willing to bid. It was either the project, the cost, or timing. And so we then say, "Okay." And I gave you guys a list of how many non-union contractors that are over here. You laminate all those contractors and our list just gets shorter and shorter and shorter. You, you guys aren't Fort Wayne, you're not Indianapolis, and you don't have people standing at your doorstep. And none of these contractors that are bidding on this stuff are local contractors. They're not Rochester contractors. You know, they're, they're, they're driving to get bid and they're willing to do the work. But if you put these situations in place, I'm afraid that it's going to get a lot harder. Plus, if I've got to do more work, my costs will go up because now I got to deal a lot more paperwork. And if we crack up and send it to Todd, he's inundating with paperwork. So we already do a little bit criminal history reports. It was a big thing that I got to put in place because of an incident at school. So we put that in place to help protect. And that we absolutely do. We do it for every school corporation, even some that have never heard before. We're like, "We do this," and they're like, "Why?" Here's why. And I, "Okay, yeah." So we do that. We make sure that we review the work in place. We make sure that they're in line with specs. We make sure, you know, that they're following the rules. And in 12 years, the only issues we've ever had were contractors who didn't follow the rules. So it was two of them. Otherwise, we haven't had these issues. You know, that, that I'm a big concern. We try to go above and beyond and, and Jan does. I'll be over here at Parkby to make sure that something's being done or looked at or deltaed so that we don't have issues with contractors. We want a good, solid relationship with contractors so that we don't have conflict. And there's, because I don't like to work with contractors that don't like us. And luckily, we've been fortunate to have good contractors or ones we've built good relationships with through the process of working over here for the last 12 years or so. And so we have a few times, times that we haven't worked with before and we don't know. But we, as I tell all of them, I trust you until you give a reason not to trust me. Follow the rules, follow the specs, and follow the guidelines. That's how I, and as soon as you lie to me and do something that your intention of doing is to try to hide something, okay, then I'm going to have to do it again for that. We'll get through the project and then I'll let you know that we don't want to let them bid in the future. And your predecessor, we have lists that tend to that. I mean, that, they're not allowed to bid because of the issues we've had. So, and, and I mentioned this before. Morrison Sun's roofing holds your warranties on your roof. So as soon as they know they can't bid on projects anymore, they're not going to care much about your warranties. So you void your warranties on your roof and then figure out what specs that gets. So you don't get that much. And, and even though if you try to find a way to write it around to allow them to still do things, they're not going to be pleased that this is good advice, being somebody who literally serves you next day after a pumpball. They will be here. And you're going to become less important. So I, I just don't want this to be critical to the roadblocks and issues that the relationship that Oscar and I talked about toward the learning center and what renovations are going on over there have nothing to do with this as far as I'm concerned. Because that equipment and that training and everything else doesn't require every contractor that owes $300,000 to bid and fulfill all these requirements. And the thing that's fulfilling, meeting the union requirement from what I know from this is the apprenticeships and the training and all of those things. But it doesn't mean that Morrison Suns, who may not do that, isn't a good contractor. Because they've done a phenomenal job with these buildings. And I unfortunately can't ask current head of the story because it's been here long enough. But I mean, we're looking at exactly that. Unruled some complaints from several places. There's some which we have replaced. But we don't have the issues. But they do a good job. Waiter building, shapewell, sex construction, is that not good? It's a nice building. This space was done by both union and non-union workers. And this is an awful space.
Terry, I do have a question for you. And I guess I'm a little confused and really surprised to hear everything you just said. Because I remember you talking to us during one of the first meetings and saying, Because I remember you talking to us during one of the first meetings and saying, when we were just asking general questions as far as like, what were the projects, and how many are over 300, or how many are over 250, you know, where's the threshold? And I remember you saying, "Actually, I do all of this anyway."
We don't do.
But now you're saying that you don't.
We don't.
Except unless it's a federal project, which I don't, I think Janet told us earlier, very rarely the school gets for construction. I mean, like, you know, ESAR and that kind of thing is totally different, but...
Casey, my response to, we do all those things, the things that were presented from the union, three of the union representatives that that night at that table. They listed a longer list of things that this does. That's not what's in here. My answer to them was, "I already do everything that you just said, and it's not this."
Okay, so it wasn't from the document language, or it was just the verbal conversation?
It was just the verbal conversation from them saying, "Here's what we're trying to do for you. Protect you this way, this way, this way, this way." That's it. We're a few of them. So there's nothing you listed that we don't already do. And it's not, you know, it's not certified payroll. It's not. That's not, those things aren't protecting the school corporation. So you're, you're hoping that you're making sure that people are following the rules, their rules, that they have the buyback through the labor department. We don't do that. We don't babysit that for them. So, and we wouldn't. And on federal projects, we don't either. It's required of the contractors to do it, but it's somebody within the entity of the federal government who reviews those things. But I know the contractors hate it because it's a bunch of paperwork. And so, but I see, our VA projects, for instance, we mark up their projects between 15% and 20%, because it's a federal project. Above and beyond the cost of the project. I'm not saying yours would be that much. It's much smaller. Those are huge properties I'm talking about. But, you know, if it adds 5%, 10%, that adds up over time. My fee goes up a little bit because now I'm doing more and more paperwork, you know, chasing that stuff down.
That has nothing to do with this, right? Because whether we have federal dollars or not, you have to do that because of the federal government requirements?
Right.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're talking about this document and how it pertains to us.
Right.
You know, I mean, because if we have federal funds, we'd have to do that, we'd have to require that. And I want to make sure that that's...
But this is putting things in place that are in, my example is, in federal projects that we don't, we don't see in K312 that we have never done for this school corporation, right? That's what it's doing. So my obvious first concern is minimizing the contractor pool. That's my biggest concern, because we really do the struggle over here. And so we know, like Janet said, it used to be you could bid a summer project in January or February. That doesn't work anymore, so we backed that up. It used to, 10 years ago, we could, and get four or five bidders. And that backed up to December, and that backed up to November, and now it's backed up to October. And it requires us to call as many of them as possible and email them the notice, you know, the bidders, and just, if we can, send it out there and make sure that we get somebody to show up. And it's, it's not easy. You guys are not in a, are not in a good spot as far as location and ease for contractors to get to. If your project's not big enough, they may not be interested. It takes the size of the apartment to, you know, get a bid.
So Kyle, I, were you, did you have, I thought I saw you taking notes. Do you have?
I guess with this, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, if a non-union contractor wants to, has their apprenticeship program and all the rest of this language, they can bid, right?
Yes. It doesn't say union.
Okay. Well, you kept referring to union versus non-union.
I, I put it in there.
I'm not asking, I'm trying to talk right.
So Kyle, did you even notice that that requirement is something they do? I talked to the three union reps after one of the meetings, in the hallway.
Can I please keep going? I wasn't asking, I was just, I wasn't asking you, I was asking him first.
All right, good.
Keep going.
The explanation that they gave me is that that puts union requirements in place. The requirement for having an apprenticeship program with that, five years or whatever it is and everything else, that they talked to me in the hallway and said, "Good luck finding a non-union contractor who does that." And I said, "Okay, I don't know anything about it." Because I don't, I don't go either way. So that being something that's put in place that non-union contractors are not going to have, isn't just going to eliminate them right off the bat?
Well, not all non-union contractors don't have that, though. I think you need to get a little more acclimated to that, because there are out there, there's programs out there for a lot of non-union contractors that I work with. So for us to just keep pushing this non-union versus union thing on this that has nothing to do with that is really starting to kind of frustrate me, because that's not what it is. It's about apprenticeships and making sure we're having responsible builders that are having responsible workers, is what I see, and trying to protect the companies that are going to bid to do work on our projects. Not non-union versus union and who did what or portrayed for contractors that've done work. I completely understand that. And also trying to create a, what I think is a fake sense of no bid. Right now, man, everybody's bidding work. Everybody. I throw out quotes daily for Central Crane, all the time. Stuff's being worked at. Stuff's being bid. So I feel like we're getting, we're trying to scare some people here and saying we're not going to get bids. I'm sorry, we're wrong there. Especially at 300,000 or more projects, there's profit to be made on those non. I get it when you don't want someone to come over here for $10,000 little switch, a couple air units out. Yeah, that's fine, you know, you're going to make you struggle, but we've still got great open contractors to do that. You know, and then I don't see much cost influx. There might be a little bit, but you know, if, if all costs go up, you're saying your costs go up, everyone's costs go up, then maybe we need to shop around completely then for, for new things. I, I don't know. If that's going to cause a lot of big costs there, then maybe that's something we need to look into if we go something like this. I guess, I, I just, I, I don't think this is necessarily as scary as what we're getting portrayed to be here on, I just look at this more of not a non-union versus union, who does great work, who doesn't, versus, I want responsible people doing work for our community, for our school system. I want to make sure we got good contractors doing good work. And I'm not saying that's happened, because they do great work. We've seen it. I mean, look at all this. But I think we're getting pushed and trying to be, I don't know what the word I'm looking here, but I think we're trying to get portrayed a picture of this as being a completely bad thing by having this union stigma to it, and I just, I think we're looking in a completely wrong direction with that. That's my opinion.
I agree with Kyle. I mean, I'm looking through this list, and I guess that's why I'm getting a little frustrated, because it's almost as if the message is getting twisted and shifted so that the dynamic of the conversation becomes union versus non-union, and that's not it. I mean, I understand if there's a little more paperwork, and I understand the conversation with the Aditorium, those contractors were a little irritated, because I'll be straight up, I'm the one that asked for an itemized list. I want to know where the differences lie in $160,000 difference. It's huge. I am shocked, absolutely shocked and slightly appalled that every one of our bid packets does not have an itemized breakdown of the cost in the very minimum of labor, materials, insurance, you know, surety, whatever. I mean, just very even basis. I just, I'm shocked. I mean, how else do you compare the bids to know that it's apples to apples? So, you know, I guess I look at a lot of this as this is all stuff they've got to have at their accountant's firm, and, you know, a copy of the written plan for employee drug testing, I personally think that's an amazing thing for a school system or any contractor who's working here. I mean, we're going to have a contractor here for nine months out of the year and schools in session, and they're around the kids. I think that's a good thing. I don't know if we are ready to require that or not, but...
...within the background shot.
Casey, if we exempted every contractor employee that was sent here that had any drug abuse background history, we'd have fewer workers in this building. You would be...
It doesn't say that. It says, "A written plan for employee drug testing."
Agreed. The limited criminal history reports show past offenses with drugs. And you would be shocked how many of those come through. So they may have a policy in place, but we don't make sure that we keep on top of that and who's been tested and who comes in the building, who doesn't come in the building. We're looking for offenses related to children, we're looking for offenses related to theft, we're looking for offenses that are red flags. And the drug part, we can't stop. We can't, we can't stop them when we say, "Hey, this is another smoking campus," but yet they grow across, they park in the street and they're smoking in the park. Or we find cigarette hoods. We do what we can. We do ask for cost breakdowns when an issue arises. And we've done that at a couple of projects over 12 years. And it's because we have projects coming overbid. So after the bid, we know they're overbid, we tell them they're all overbid, we ask for a cost breakdown to use that cost information and figure out what we can do to work with them to rebid the project and get the cost down. So that's the only time we've done it. Otherwise, it's in our, it's in our specs that if we ask for it, they have to provide it 48 hours. In most cases, we don't ask for it because we make sure that they bid for the specs and the drawings, and as long as they say, "Yes, I'm good," and in this case, the Aditorium Locker Room project, I emailed Brown and Brown within hours of the bid open and asked them to review their bid because they were significantly low, and they emailed the response back, it's that our bid is good. So that means they have to abide by our specs and our drawings to a T in order to do the project. And contractually, if they don't, then we'd be dealing with an issue. And if all the years of doing this, we've only run into that issue two times with contractors. So I, and unfortunately, you know, it, it's something that we dealt with and we got through, wasn't fun. Janet made it because it was one of her first things moving as superintendent. But those contractors, they're exempt from bidding. We've never seen them again, and we won't as long as I'm doing this, because we don't trust them.
And I can understand that, but why would you spend the school and the taxpayers' dollars on attorneys, when all you have to do is ask for that breakdown in the beginning?
That breakdown, the only thing that breakdown, we've ever asked for a breakdown is, is when we had to rebid something. In this case, in asking them for that information, I've asked for it, we'll get it, and we'll review it. It may or may not tell us the answer. I do it a lot for private outside of this, for other clients, but it's because bids are way over budget, and those are federal projects.
I've never seen a bid packet without it, Terry. And I worked in county government for 20 years and saw a lot of bids open. I've never seen one without it. And that's, that's an Aditorium, and I'm sorry, I kind of diverted on that. But, you know, I guess my biggest thing, my opinion on this particular document, is I don't receive anything in here that is egregious. I don't see anything in here that somebody's accountant shouldn't already have. I mean, a written statement of federal and state tax liens, tax delinquencies owned, I mean, a statement of individuals, you know, who will work, I mean, they got to have that, they got to have their subcontractors. You know, and the drug testing that it talks about is a written plan, and it's based on an IC code. So I guess, I mean, and this is just my opinion, this is just the way I'm reading it, you know, again, I'm getting a little frustrated because it seems like it's a, you know, more of a, you know, let's see what's wrong with it, and that this is the first time we've heard that in almost four months. And I think that's probably one of...
Except from the beginning, Casey, that the point is, our point is not to protect the companies who do the work. As Kyle said, I appreciate the passion for that. Our point is to protect the corporation, and we have opinions from people who've been doing this a very long time, that this does not protect the corporation, and it does not, by what they've said tonight, help advance apprenticeship more than any other thing that they could, or is essential part of doing that. So why would we add extra burden to the corporation? That, that frustrates me, because I, I appreciate that Local 150 is developing this relationship. I appreciate that they brought this to us. Kyle mentioned where is this union, non-union. It came from a union representative who's advancing the...
This has nothing to do with non-union or union, though.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with it.
But it came...
Does it or not? Has nothing to do with it.
It came from the Local 150 because they're a fancy...
So our language has nothing to do with union versus non-union. You guys keep twisting it to that.
I'm not twisting anything. I'm saying that where it came from, it, normally policies or resolutions come from within like the ISDA, or there's policies that come that are necessitated through laws, or Neola has some suggestions. Oftentimes, Janet will learn from something from her superintendent's counsel. It is, I, I thought on it, and I don't remember a time, and there could have been one, I'm just not remembering it, where an outside organization brought this to us without being And, and it's okay to bring that, but I think it's important to also understand it came from an outside organization, and, and this vetting is very important for us to do. On what role does it serve for our corporation and our role as stewards of this corporation? And if it doesn't protect the corporation any more than what we're already doing, and if it doesn't advance the apprenticeships any more than what we're already doing, then I see no reason to do that.
And I would disagree with you. I think it protects the corporation more than what is going on now, based on what's written in here. Because it's calling for the drug testing, it's calling for the payroll records, which not only go to the wages, it goes to the fact that somebody actually has paid their employees and are in good business standing. I mean, there's a lot of things in here that are, again, being kind of twisted, and they are for the good of the corporation, in my eyes, in my opinion. I don't look at the what it should have, could have, it might happen as being the sole reason to say, "Well, this is absolutely not good for us, and I don't believe that we should pass it." You know, I'm looking at all of these items, you know, the drug tests, the taxes, tax fraud, I mean, all of this goes to character, it goes to years of service, it goes to their business sense. I mean, I see the value in every one of these, and even the drug testing. You know, it's their plan, it's based on an IC code. I don't know how this couldn't be good for the corporation. And, you know, as far as the apprenticeship, I absolutely agree with what Oscar said. I don't believe this document is essential to the school corporation furthering the career pathways. It'll go on, you know? I mean, I'll be a huge advocate for it as long as I'm on the board, I know that. No matter if we have this document or not. Now, do, I think this document gives, you know, the people who want to read it, the people who hear about the meeting, if it's approved, that we have it, if it shows them, "Hey, you know, we not only will have the career pathways, because in their eyes, they'll say we get money from the state for it, we're doing it because we believe these are very viable careers, they're valuable, that we believe kids should have multiple options." Because for the last 30 some odd years, it's been, "Go to college, go to college, go to college, go to college." You know, and I think that this document is just an aid to showing people that we support that. I don't think it's essential to it, but I do think that it is a tool. And that's just my opinion.
I think it's important not to adopt things that could constrain what we have the opportunity to do.
Kyle, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, yeah, over the years, as Terry said, getting bids has been pretty tough. And from what I'm hearing, I, I don't want bid process to be limited. But then, again, the 300,000 threshold, that's a bid level that will draw people and still give us opportunity for local under 300,000. So is it necessary to add this? I don't think so. It seems like over the years, we've accomplished things that are in here. Maybe this might give it a little more tea, a little bite. But I think Terry's done a good job over the years of reviewing and getting the right people to us. I don't know if it's necessary, necessary at the document they do.
So if I may, and I know that we've spent a lot of time on this, Casey, I would be interested in hearing your language, your exclusionary language, so that Jason could maybe tweak that document, and then I would propose that you leave it to the board president and to decide to go ahead and make it to vote.
So Jason, we are working from the document that has the bold heading on the top. That would be the one. Can we all be in agreement then that we aren't requiring five years and five graduates from the apprenticeship program, but that we are...
from the apprenticeship program, but that we are acknowledging that the apprenticeship is an important part of the document? Should it be? Should it be approved? Okay. And then can we all agree to the changes in the document, that the 300,000 would be the bid, the breaking point for those bids? And then, Casey, I know that you had talked about exclusionary rather than including, and if everybody is okay with that, changing that verbiage? Or do you want to share that verbiage?
To document, you said, you don't have that. RCSC was responsible for the number of votes.
That's what she's on. So, I don't know. Is that possible, Jason?
Got it. Also, so, no changes made yet.
I found it, Jana.
Thank you, Casey.
So you're saying instead of the, it'd be Roman numeral number three, the validity of prequalification classification?
Correct.
Strike that, and, I don't know, title it what exclusion? And I just said-
Roman numeral three, say it again.
Yeah, the Roman number three where it says validity of prequalification classification. Strike that, Roman numeral three in that section, and maybe title it exclusion. Exclusion. And I said, whatever sounds right. This document excludes repair, replacement slash maintenance of roofing projects and design element bids.
My video's blocked again.
Can you keep your video? It's showing everything that you're doing, so.
Oh, I didn't realize, I just tried to touch again.
So excluding replacement and maintenance roofing projects and design element bids for windows, doors, flooring, paint, tiles, et cetera. Any objection to being classified as such or not classified as such can come to the board. That would take all frequency prejudice. That's just my-
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm listening, I'm trying to help to find-
So I don't know if you guys can think of any other language that would be, I was just trying to keep it short and sweet and simple. Just exclude the roofing projects, whether it's maintenance or new. You know, replacement and maintenance of the roofing projects, and then the design elements, your windows, doors, flooring, paint, tiles, stuff like that.
I will say, I mean, obviously, I've been candid that I don't see the need for this document. If the majority of the board disagrees, I would encourage to look at inclusionary language instead of exclusionary language, because I believe that that ties the hands of future boards in what, we don't know what they may want to do, and if we're just excluding projects, then we may not even know, I mean, I don't know if there's turf that needs to be, I know that's something that probably isn't going to happen anytime soon, but if we instead say that these are the projects that we want to fall under this policy, I think that that gives future boards more opportunities to make sure that that process is followed. Took it out.
Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we adopt the policy, two years, it doesn't go away, we think we can move it too.
Correct.
See things going not the way expected. Drop letter, change their language.
Did you get that language from Casey, Jason, or Ed Wood? No trouble finding it?
We need to have, we need to have that right now, or can I do a Casey?
Let me just give you my phone.
I just like, I'm not seeing what's included.
It doesn't, it's not anywhere. Just want to be brand new to replace this, is what I'm, I'm-
So you're saying pick all this out?
Yeah, all the sections, yeah.
But they can, we need to prove that the board agrees to strike that language first, or how is this performed?
Yeah.
We don't have a motion, it's just on the deal to do anything.
Okay. So Jason, we have to wait for motions.
No, if they don't agree, you can just-
Thank you, Lauren. I got one on the document, I have to watch the word for it.
What, what did I just read? No, that's just an idea.
Okay.
I know, the language of the, of what's in three, the validity of the prequalification classification, I don't like that language, personally. You know, my vote would be absolutely no, if that language is included, just because I think what it does is it gives, it opens the door to anybody walking in here and making claims, you know, false claims of, you know, under the table deals, I mean, to be quite frank. I mean, I think it opens up-
Prequalification, is that what you mean?
Yeah, because of the prequalification, it's, oh, so-and-so, you know, they got the low bid because they were also allowed to be prequalified. And I just, whether it's true, not true, you know, I just don't like the fact that we'd be writing in language that would open that door- to, you know, those types of claims. I just, I don't think the superintendent's office, no matter who's sitting in that chair, should be put in that position to have to prequalify one versus another, and it's, and it's never-ending. It's forever. Why? And, you know, I'm not saying any of the contractors that came through were horrible. I mean, I know there were issues with jobs, I saw it, but there's issues at every job, no matter who the contractors are. Some are worse than others. So I just, I don't like this language, I just don't like the position it puts the superintendent, you know, the admin, no matter who's asking for that bid, I just, I don't like it. So I proposed, instead of using that, doing an exclusion and just saying, let's exclude the roof, you know, the maintenance and the repair of roofing, and then the interior design elements, which are your doors, windows, carpet, tile, paint, you know, those types of things. And basically, you're sticking to the excavation, carpentry, electrical plumbing, H-bench.
Or other projects that may come up that we don't know, but they're included because they're not explicitly excluded.
Brand new project over $300,000.
Yeah, I don't know how much the irrigation was when we did that, it might have been under that, but there are things that come up, that if they're not explicitly excluded then, would be included in this, and that may be an unintended consequence. That's why I suggested that if you're moving forward with this, if the majority of the board wants to perform with this, then there should be inclusionary language instead.
Jan, I don't think it's possible to add everything in inclusionary, I think it's too broad. I think there could be a clause in there that writes, if a bid comes up for landscaping, and there's a sprinkler system that goes in, that's going to be in the football field, you know, something completely odd.
No, we had that just a couple of years ago, a complete sprinkler system in the football field.
And I think we could add that in here, as far as, you know, just like, I think, and I'm not sure what Lauren was, an example of what she was thinking, or how it would be written, but like in this exclusionary, is, a bid comes up that has an oddity like that, either we can bid it separate, you know, bid it in the packet, you bid it separate, or you put the exclusion in there that it can come before the board, and the board can say, look, this particular component, you know, we're bidding it separate because of X, Y, Z, A, B, and C, and it's in the minutes, it's approved by the board, there's zero room for anybody to say there's, you know, any type of odd things going on.
Any other comment from the board? Any comment from the audience?
This policy's good on several different occasions. In the conversation that I had with the gentleman sitting in front of me a couple of study sessions ago, there are apprentices for non-unions, it's called the ABC, and they have apprentices, so I don't know where this became a union document, because it's not. But you guys are being proactive by passing a policy. These policies are passed and all the time because there's value into them that protects the corporation, protects you guys, it's, it's of value to you guys, you know? So, there's a lot of good stuff, especially drug testing. Who would let our contractors, you gotta pay us background checks, expensive background checks, to go on any school project? I wouldn't let anybody in here with a drug problem to come into a school with my kids in it. So that drug policy in here is really, really important. There's a lot of contractors out of here, I dropped books off to Mrs. Vance. You know, with all contractors, maybe start reaching out to the South End, to the Port, they travel, I got contractors in Culver right now. Maybe we're not reaching out to the right people, maybe, don't go to Fort Wayne, maybe try South End. I mean, there's a lot of important stuff in here that protects you guys, protects the corporation. It's not just because I brought this in here, it's a good document, that's why everybody's
Thank you, Nick. Any other comments from the community?
I really have no knowledge as to previous to this meeting about this document. But just in sitting in this meeting, you talk about apprentices, apprenticeship, and you talk about this document leading both of them, tying them together. I would say that if you want to pursue the apprenticeship program, let's set that separately aside, let's get that under control, and then this can be discussed later at another board meeting, and it can be decided, language can be changed, however it so fits the school corporation appropriately, rather than talking about apprenticeship and talking about this project at the same time.
Thank you for your comment. I, I do feel at this time that we've been at this for four months, at least, so I feel that it's time to put it to a vote, and would like to request that the approval, the approval of, I'm on the wrong number, number four. Too many pages. Number four on page-
Can we get Kyle's picture and his audio up before-
Number four on page-
And then any vote done on, up there from Kyle, and everything has to be done by a roll call?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
You understand why I asked?
So, I would entertain a motion for approval of the responsible bid proposal for Rochester Community School Corporation.
So moved.
Thank you, Kyle.
Second.
And Casey. We got Kyle Mack on board?
I've asked him to unmute and asked him to unvideo, or turn on this video, but he is not responding.
K A, you're up to ask if you're asking for a motion to approve as written, or if you're asking for a motion to approve with suggestions.
With corrections, thank you.
But by who, and what are they?
Okay.
If he's kind of up here at this point.
Yep. We are, I guess I'm asking for a motion to approve the responsible bid proposal for Rochester Community School Corporation with the deletion of item Roman numeral three about, which was about the prequalifications. So Kyle, would you want to, again?
I'm here, I'm here.
Got it, all right.
I'm here.
All right. So, at this time, because we have Kyle Mack on Zoom, we need to do a roll call vote, and I will do that alphabetically. So, Casey.
So that, I just want to make sure I'm clear, this is a motion with striking, with as written, but striking-
I vote yes.
It's not your turn! You gotta wait till your call.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Striking section three, and then including the exclusionary with the roofing and the interior designs, or just striking three?
I waited.
Striking, I thought you said striking three.
I did, but I want to make sure that what you're talking about with the motion, is both striking three and excluding roofing, and, okay, I just, I want to make sure that's clear. Okay. Yes?
Casey says yes. Kyle McLaughlin?
I'm here.
Vote, vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Miller, votes no. Joe Murphy is absent. Kyle Renssberger?
Yes.
Tom Schwan?
No.
Jenny Smith?
No.
We are at a three to three time. That means that the motion pass, motion fails for not having a clear majority at this time. So, I appreciate everyone's discussion and everyone's input, and we will now move on and go back to page one, and looking at the approval of, approval of the minutes on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the June 21st, 2022 regular session. We also have the approval of the minutes from the July 5th, 2022 regular board meeting. Any questions or concerns regarding any of those?
I had, Katie, I have a question for Amber to double check. On the July 5th, regular board meeting minutes, it doesn't look like Joe is listed as present, but he's listed as present on the study session, and he's listed as voting, so I think he did stay for the-
I think he had to leave early. He left early because he had a ball game.
Yeah, he left at like 6:30.
Okay, so he wasn't present?
He was, but he wa, he wasn't, and then he left after like the 45 minutes.
Okay, so this is the 5:47, the meeting, it's to approve the personnel report, but there's this inconsistency.
He wasn't present for the personnel, I didn't think.
Okay, if he wasn't, because I couldn't remember either way, then he should be marked absent in the voting block. If he was present, then he needed to be out of his prison, because if he's not, then-
There was one more thing, and it happens to me all the time, Amber, so, just, Casey Coles is CASI, and you have her written down as Cassie, like Cassie Murphy, so that happens to me all the time, and she'll tell you I call her Cassie half the time.
Everybody knows.
Yeah.
And it's probably your auto correct, because you typed Cassie Murphy all the time.
Okay. So, just an FYI on that one. All right. Any questions from the board regarding either of those minutes? Questions from the community? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the approval of the minutes for July 5th and the minutes for June 21st. You know, whoops, I missed one.
I'm sorry, I think Jenny's right, I think Joe was here this whole meeting, this wasn't the baseball game. This was when Mr. Fisher was here.
Oh, he was here for that.
Yeah, I think he was here for that whole thing.
I thought so, but I'd have to look at the tape, I slept since then, I think he was here.
So, like, need to change or not?
It needs to change, but it sounds like it need, the change needs to be adding him to being present.
Yeah, he was here.
So you don't have to change the voting block.
But he needs to be listed as-
But he needs to be listed as present.
So we, we did have the minutes from the June 21 regular session, the approval of the minutes from the July 5th study session, I missed that one, and the approval of the minutes from the July 5th regular board meeting, and the only thing on that agenda was the personnel report. Okay? So are we all clear on that? Clear as mud?
So moved.
Ads corrected, please. Ads corrected.
Ads corrected, thank you. Casey made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jenny? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to the funds report.
Funds report for June. Education fund, we have receipts of $985,338.2. We had expenses of $1,163,000. We had expenses of $1,163,008.13. Cash balance in the education fund at the end of June is $815,193.44. Debt service fund, we had receipts of $1,899,756.49. Expenses of $1,521,040.63. Cash balance in the debt service fund at the end of June is $1,387,165.59. In the operations fund, we had receipts of $1,747,650.68. We had expenses of $451,201.74. Cash balance at the end of June in the operations fund is $1,737,273.41.
Any questions on the funds report?
Just one, just to double check. Todd, this is before any reimbursements that you're gonna ask for later?
Yes.
Okay, so the education operations are a little lower year over year, but there's, well, it sounds like there's
And the operations, or the education, well, actually both, we had deferred the health insurance transfers in March and April, caught up.
Ah, that's why.
So there was an extra, there was an extra transfer made in June for May, so
Gotcha.
And of course, next month, just to remind everyone, is a three pay, or this month is a three pay month, so, which I'll remind you again in August.
Thank you.
Okay. Claims?
We asked that you would please approve claims in the amount of $2,981,117.76, I'm sorry.
Okay, and the next, the next item is approval payroll?
Payrolls, there were two payrolls, July 1st in the amount of $398,310.49, and July 15th in the amount of $391,555.73.
Okay, any questions on the funds report? Approval of claims or the approval of payrolls? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? I'll entertain a motion to approve all of these as a consent agenda, consent items. Financial report as a consent.
Some move.
Casey?
Sorry?
All those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Donations. We have donations through July 18. We have RHS Cheerleaders, $150 for a non-specified purpose for CMP ventures, from CMP ventures. We have $300 for Riddle Elementary School as a recycling reward from Fulton County Solid Waste District. We have RMS receiving $500 recycling reward for Fulton County Solid Waste District. We have Columbia Elementary receiving $300 for a recycling reward from the Fulton County Solid Waste District. And Riddle Elementary receives $500, one book, one school, from the Women of the Moose of Rochester, Indiana.
And then there is an additional, Charlie Schwank?
I have, yes, well, I have that, that was her personnel.
But thank you, mother, for the Thank you.
Uh, Charlie Schwank sent a thank you note. A thank you from Mrs. Schwank for different groups who helped with summer school, to Kathy Adams from the B and K for your free root beer floats on the last day, to the Fulton County Wellness Center for allowing us to play volleyball, racquetball, and participate in a cardiac drumming class with Pat Elliott instructing. A thank you to the Round Barn Golf Course for allowing us to practice at the driving range and putting, along with Dan Bailey and Kevin Rainey offering instruction. To the Country Lanes for having us participate in bowling, and thank you to all of these groups for helping our students to participate in these lifetime activities. Sincere thanks, Charlie. Very nice. And do we have a motion then to accept these donations?
Some move.
Casey?
I'll second.
And Jenny? All in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Again, we are overwhelmed on a regular basis by the generosity of folks in our community who come forward to help out even when we aren't aware that we have a need. Those are always met before the board, a lot of times before the board ever knows about it, so it's just an amazing thing. Moving on. Approval of the executive meeting, June 14th, 2022, and just a certification that we did meet on that evening.
I have a question about this one, and I know these are hard for Amber to draw up, because Amber doesn't go.
Right.
Um, but the 14th, I wasn't there, and I don't know if anybody else was missing.
Well, Tom, were you there?
For which one?
It was the executive session. I think you might have been in the field.
No, he was there.
He was there?
Yeah.
This is the one, yeah, yeah, this is asking about the one with Kevin Rainey.
Right.
And Oscar Hawes.
Right.
And Janet, I wasn't.
Hi, Kyle Mack was there, so one, two, three, four.
Which date, Jenny?
This is the June 14th.
Joe Murphy was not there.
Joe wasn't there.
So we just need to be taken on with that. Amber?
Kyle, Tom, you.
Yeah, on the June 14th one, I'm listed as present. I had, so it's Kyle, Kyle, Tom, and yeah. So Oh, on the one that I see, it's the June 14th executive session. So I need to be removed, and Joe needs to be removed, because all the board, excuse me, all the board members are listed.
What? Oscar and Kevin were not there.
Oscar and Kevin weren't there?
Nope.
What does that mean?
They were.
This is why I was on my
Right. Jenny was not there, no. Oscar and Kevin were not there.
I don't think we've ever had an executive session done, us and staff.
Lauren was there, I remember Lauren.
We did have one, Kevin came in, spoke on an issue.
But it wasn't these two, you're, yeah, you're right, I do remember that.
I apologize, it was corrected and not re-uploaded, so I'll get that corrected.
Thank you, Amber.
My copy has it, but the one that's on here, that's where my confusion was coming in.
I understand how that works, it's okay.
I apologize for that.
That's fine.
That's why?
Thank you, yeah, we were confused and we were there, okay.
We were there. Like, wait a minute, I never see that there.
So if we could approve the executive meeting from June 14th as corrected, if I could have a motion for that?
Some move.
Casey? And second?
Sorry.
Tom, thank you. All those in favor? And motion passes five to zero. And now we have the approval of the executive meeting on June 21st, 2022. Which one was that? Oh, yeah, we did our evaluation, yes we did.
It, the one that I see on you looks correct. Yep, this looks good.
Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve the second executive meeting on June 21st, 2022?
Some move.
Thank you, Jenny. And Casey. All those in favor of approving? Motion carries five to zero. And we have the S or two, or approval of the S or two expenses as presented. We should have a nice document here from Todd. Where did I miss that?
Number three.
Yeah, number three.
Oh, I wonder why I was thinking of this one when we just did it again. Okay, I apologize, moving back. Number three, approval of the bid for the mandatory locker room at Rochester Middle School.
So I invited Terry for this as well, it's been past practice with bids when they come in and ask their own questions. And I, Terry has said previously that he has requested some additional information, but Terry, if you want to lead them through the bids and where you are in conversations and that information.
Is this different than the one that was attached to our board package?
So this is for the, this is for mandatory locker room renovation project. We did receive four bids, this is back in June 22nd. We did receive four bids, Alcindor Brothers, Brown and Brown, Gibson Lewis, and Chisholm Construction. We see the base bid numbers there, makes Brown and Brown low, and they are significantly lower than others on the list. We did, as I mentioned earlier, I did reach out to them immediately after the meeting, as soon as I got back from office, and emailed and asked, hey, double check, because your bid doesn't make sense compared to the others. Make sure that you don't have any issues, and they emailed back, and I think I sent that back to everybody, was, they said that their bid's good. And so that means that they're saying their bid's good as per our specs and drawings, and they're going to abide by those specs and drawings. Since then, I was requested to Jan to ask for bid breakdowns from all four contractors, and I've done so, but I don't have that information except for one contractor, and I need it from all four to share with you guys. So I gave it until Wednesday. I sent it on Saturday, but I can't, I give forty an hour from Monday.
But Terry, is it of your opinion that based on past practice and what we've done, and the information in your specs that this bid has to hold?
Does, right, contractually right now, they have no out. If they didn't follow our drawings and specs to a T as far as bidding, the information that's provided for bidding, and then they come to the table and start a project and submit something that doesn't, wasn't approved or pre-approved, then we can hold them accountable to say, you have to bid what, or provide what's in the drawings. Contractually, they have to, there's no, there's no way they can get out of it because it's black and white. So we've had to do that before on a few contractors, where they tried to either sneak something in, or their bidding guy messed up, and I don't like doing it, because then you have a contractor's time. And if they're then spending money or losing money on a project, that's not good. I don't want to treat them, you know, that way, but contractually, yes, Brown and Brown is obligated to be the required.
And I think, Todd, we had budgeted $525,000, so this came in under our budgeted amount and does include contingency funds, I think Terry just spoke about maybe $30,000 in contingency funds. Would recommend that we move forward with this, and if moving forward at a study session, money to have conversations about presenting bid breakdowns, is that something moving forward that you could help us do? If the board decided moving forward, they would like to see that as well.
Yes, agreed, and actually, a few things that were discussed for the agreement, I think are good ideas. The drug policy, part, we can add anything to our specs that you guys want. So I think there are a few good, I, there's thirteen
So right now, we're not even asking for a drug policy from contractors?
We require limited, limited criminal history report. That requires them to provide, every contractor that's split this building on this campus has to provide that. So they do a background check immediately, and it tells us whether or not those people are in trouble.
What are all these things on here that state pending due? Well, I mean, I would think, and again
We have
I've never, I haven't, you know, this is a little bit different realm for me, because, and this, I think, it's just something I'd like to talk to the board of the study session, but I'd like to see the drawings before they go out to bid. I'd like to see what we're asking for, because quite honestly, I know we're redoing it, I know it needs to be done. I have no clue exactly what components we even asked them to bid on. I really think the board should be knowledgeable about that and see that. And I mean, like, the financial statement, and I mean, the schedule of values and the cost breakdown, I mean, that's exactly what I was kind of asking for. Lists of subs, I mean, all of this is pending, why isn't that part of the big packet when they submit it?
Because in the past, when we tried to do that, Casey, we would have to reject everybody's bid.
You would have to do what?
Reject everyone's bid, they won't provide it all, they won't provide it all upfront. There's always an excuse, there's always a reason, there's always something, all the time. So what we do is we get some of it from them, some bid packages may have three of these things already included, others may have four, and some of them may have two. And so we don't, so the way our specs are written, if we request these items, and most of them we do, there's a timeline. If requested, you have forty dollars, and they have to provide these things to us. Contractually, before we write their AIA contract, we include most of these items. But we allow them, because they won't get all of their bond information in place, they can't until they actually, actually, their bond forms, until they're
The bonds, I kind of understand, because they're normally a timeline, there's normally a 12-month, and then it's a renewal.
Right.
But most of them also kind of have a standing bond, but
So 12 years ago, we used to have that laundry list, and said, everybody has to provide this stuff, and we like, we just gave up about, because they won't do it, they absolutely won't do it.
I just really find that really odd. I mean, because this is just standard operating procedure for every bid I have ever seen. And I'm gonna say this, and Terry's probably gonna be like, oh, Lord. If the contractors that, I mean, because let's be honest, there was like four that bid 15 jobs. If the contractors in the past had issues with providing a school this with the bid packet, I mean, because, let's get serious. I mean, you know, the criminal history form, and even the financial, I mean, that's important for a, from a business sense, to know that they're a qualified candidate, if it's a brand-new contractor, you've never worked with them. You know, if they're having issues with that, I mean, these are simple forms you can get from an accountant, then maybe we should be looking somewhere else in a different area for different contractors. Because it really is, it's just so standard, I just don't know why they'd ever fit about it.
Right, we make sure that we get them before we sign a contract. But in most cases, they don't provide it, and it's just, when they don't do it, and you have to go. If you, if I went through that list and opened every bid packet, and said, okay, this is missing, this is missing, this is missing, I would bet that ninety-nine percent of the time, we're gonna reject everything.
Well, and what happens is, let's say, the low bid of any project, not mandatory, but any project comes in, and let's say, you know, their financial statement, you know, it talks on here, you know, contractor's qualification statement, and the financial statement. Let's say it is not up to what, I mean, I'm assuming you have a tier approach on that financial statement, something is acceptable, something is not. What if it's not, like, do you then come back to the board and automatically go to?
We would have to, it depends on where we stand on our contract for agreement with them. If we had an issue arise through the process of gathering the rest of these documents, a red flag shows up, we immediately then have a discussion with Janet and say, hey, we gotta, we gotta dig into this, or get attorney involved and say, wait a minute, something's not lining up here. In the case of these four contractors, I've worked with two of them. The other two, Brown and Brown, it gives a loose a bid on projects up here, but everything's successful in the past. So I have that working relationship with them, Gibson Lewis is a pretty big company.
I have a working relationship with Brown and Brown.
Yeah, Brown and Brown's just not as big, and they've never been, they, I think I've seen a bid say five or six hundred, or four years.
But I'm not talking about this specifically, I'm talking about all bids, I mean, I guess, I'm really surprised that, I guess as a board member, I have a hard time looking at bids and saying, okay, this is great, when all of these, you know, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, or eight, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, these nine items are still pending, you know? You know, I mean, and if we have a low bid and we have a nominee that, you know, is being recommended, I'm not sure why that stuff isn't sitting in front of us so that we can look at it and say, we're not even going to give the approval unless we know all of this stuff is here.
That needs to then be decided on the board. That needs to have at least four members say that we want to change the role of the board in the process, which is, is something that can happen. But since that isn't what's going on right now, this is, we relied on the recommendation of the superintendent and she's worked with the architect to provide the recommendation. In the past, it's been, to a certain extent, like personnel. So for instance, we don't sit in on the interviews for anyone except for the superintendent. We take the recommendation of the administrators that they bring to us for the personnel report, even though technically we approve it. And that's the same for this. Unless we have a discussion, we talk with I S P A, we see what is the role of other boards in evaluating bids. Because in the past, the, the role of the board wasn't seen to evaluate the bids, it was to approve a recommendation. And that's after we're having a working relationship. And then obviously, if we decide we can't, just like with personnel, I can't rely on you to bring me good recommendations, then that's a whole other discussion. But, so I mean, I understand with your background that it's interesting to want to dive into those deeper details and if the rest of the board or majority of the board decides that they have a plan, that's something that could be looked at, we could talk with Lauren about that, look at other boards and see what they do. But that, that's why it's this way. It's, I don't want to say it's an automatic thing, it has to be board proof, but it is, it is in the same way like personnel or handbook changes, that type of thing, not questions, but we don't actually look through all the bids.
And for clarification, Terry, by the time it arrives on my desk for Lauren and I to look through these items or completely they then filled in?
It's the sixty pages of stuff that you got, right?
And I understand that and, you know, Jenny, thank you for clarifying that. I'm not, and I've said that, I think, three times, I'm not talking about the natatorium. I'm talking about overall. I would like to know if it really is just past practice because that's what you've always done, or if it really is policy. Because quite honestly, again, I'm just kind of shocked that this hasn't come up. You know, I don't see a four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollar bid the same as personnel. I wholeheartedly have faith in Jenna and the admin to do personnel, to do everything that they do. But when you're talking about five hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money, I personally see that it, that is my responsibility of one of seven to review that and make sure that we're doing the best for the corporation and the taxpayer. And that's why I'm asking these questions, like, why do we do it this way? Why, why don't we see more things? Why aren't these documents included? Because otherwise, if it was just, you know, there's no say in the board, I don't even know why it would come to us. I mean, why wouldn't they just get hired?
It's not no say in the board. It's about who we have entrusted with making those decisions and bringing those to us.
Well, I'm just saying, I'd like to have that conversation in a study session and I'm throwing this on.
That's fine, and I think that it would be good to have a background by checking with leadership at I S P A to see what other, what is typical practice in other boards. Because I, I really, I'm not sure. And I would respectfully say too, that yes, five hundred thousand dollars is very important for taxpayer money, but perhaps even more important is who is in their classroom every day or who is leading a building and we trust those recommendations to the superintendent.
Jenny, really, now I could ask Jenna and every one of the admin, how much experience do you have in construction and building a natatorium?
But she's taking the.
Now, the list for hiring personnel is extensive. So I don't see the differ, the comparables there at all. You know, there's no question in my mind, they're amazing at their jobs of being able to hire people.
And I would just say that that's why we titled it Architect. So again, if that is something that the board wants to relook at, that would be something that Katie could have in this study session.
We'll just bring that up in the next study session and see if anybody else has any questions. If they don't, no problem, we'll just keep approving five hundred thousand dollar projects without seeing the plans.
Casey, the programs and specs are available in Janet's office, usually a week or a week or two ahead of bidding process. You always welcome to mention it. They're there all the time.
Terry, you and I both know you have those electronic. And I have asked for it more than once when we've done projects to have a copy of the electronic. And I've always been told, okay, I'll get that. And I have never once seen it.
They're available, they're available, they're available.
And again, if a board member wants to go look at what is available to the public, that is fine, but to ask for things to be sent to board members should be a board decision.
It was in a board meeting.
But I'm saying that the board should vote.
Should be in the minutes. I don't know what more you want, Jenny.
If there are four people who want to have that disseminated among the board in a different way than for the public, then that can happen. But that has not been voted on and so it should not happen. Maybe it's been discussed in the board meeting, but I don't remember a vote that that is how it should be addressed.
It was like over a year ago. I don't remember either and I really have no idea why you're being argumentative about this. This shouldn't be top secret. It's a set of plans. So anyway, my apologies for bringing up a discussion and we'll bring it up in a study session. If I'm on, we're working on that.
Are there any comments, other comments from the board at this time? Any comments from the community?
Yeah, if you're spreading mine, I'd like to know what's on.
Thank you, Troy.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the bid for the natatorium locker room at Rochester Middle School.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
One second.
Thank you, Jenny. All in favor? Three, all opposed? Two. Motion passes three to two. Moving on to S R funds. Todd, I think I finally got to you.
Okay, so there, I believe Amber got this, this is the agenda. We feel like we've hit the threshold of the, what was appropriated to us for S R two in expenses and we're asking for permission to seek reimbursement now. Some of the expenses in the list were things that we've already discussed via transfers. But as a, in whole, this covers the first line, obviously substitutes, overtime and the FICA involved with such. Second line is server support for, I believe it's security server, the surveillance server, say hand type, the hand sanitizing stations that we rent that are in the different buildings. I think we walked, you probably walked by at least one when you came in. There was some school safety that was, that also involved there. Technology classroom supplies, that is not just, here's a list of MacBook payments, a lot of our software renewals included with that. There's also technology hardware, charger cubes, cords, replacement screens, et cetera, that some of the work we do, tech department does. Our portion of the Columbia Playground that we did, I think that's been, I think that was toward the middle.
Last summer.
Yeah. Was it just last summer? Okay, so it's not been along with those, I thought. And then the reimbursement, the athletic department for the Lost Gate, I think we approved that. That was some kind of a spring, that was part of that, that group. So the total appropriation from the Department of Education was one point four three three million. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community?
Yeah, is there a place where the public can see the itemized breakdown of that?
The itemized breakdowns of what these funds were spent on?
Right. It's on the board docs, Molly. Oh, you mean like inside each line item?
Right. I'm sorry, Todd, I didn't.
We could, I can print that from our financial software very quickly.
Okay. And where would she be able to get that?
I can, I can print it, have it right at the office. I'd get your email address and send it to you, whatever is.
Is it, can it just be available at the admin office? Like with, with?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can it be available with like school board meeting minutes? Is that?
You could add that to the minutes or have Amber add that to the minutes, the breakdown?
Is that what you're asking, like add to the?
Right. Like for future, like the breakdown instead of just the total and a lump. So that the public can know where that is going.
Okay. Any other questions? At this time, I would request a motion to approve the S R expenses, which were basically, we're reimbursing the corporation for money spent during the COVID last two years. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. All those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to number, item number six. Approval of an overnight field trip for the Rochester cross country to Pokégan State Park for team bonding, as it, as it shows through the document we appear to see, cross country team. How, how long they going to be gone?
So Oscar, if you would like to update the board in regards to, the, the first question is how long they're going to be gone?
Two nights, I see it up here.
And then with the changing of the guard, how you propose handling that?
Yes, so tonight, there is a recommendation for a new cross country coach on the board agenda. He would like to continue this trip. If it does get approved, it's a trip that Coach Staubbaum started probably five years ago, maybe six, that I can recollect. He may have done it before that. And then Coach Lin continued that on when Coach Staubbaum left. And they go up and they run and then they camp and then they run some more and they continue to run and they come home. So it's a really good team bonding. Cross country's had a lot of success over the last four or five years. And so I think this is a big part of how they developed that team chemistry going into the season.
I, I think, so look at number, number five where it says, what provisions are made for students who are financially unable to pay? It says covered by the coach. That was nice of the last coach to commit funds from this coach, but isn't there a cross country or a team fund or something?
Yeah, if there's need, we'll make sure it's covered if Coach Goodman isn't.
No problem.
If Coach Goodman gets approved and then isn't willing to do that part, Mr. Reed, I'll take care of it.
We got it, all right.
In the past, he used to go to the dunes, too, didn't he?
Yeah. Run up and down there.
Take me to the dunes in the middle of August and let me run.
They love it. They look forward to it.
I'd be glad to video the whole thing for me.
I'm having a heart attack just remembering that.
Okay, so we, if I could have a motion to approve the overnight field trip for cross country team, please. Thank you, Casey.
One second.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, sending them on our own. Motion carries five to zero. And we move on into information and that is the second reading of the following policies. Two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, I always love this part. Two thousand, six hundred. Policy fifty-one, eleven. Policy fifty-three, four, zero, point, zero, one. Policy fifty-four, six, zero. Policy two, three, seven, zero, point, zero, two. Policy eight, three, three, zero. Policy six, one, one, zero. Policy five, five, one, one. Policy six, one, one, four. Policy zero, one, six, seven, point, three. And policy six, three, two, five. I believe these were all technical corrections or minimal language changes to reflect things that came to us from the state that said, this is what you have to do. So any questions or concerns about this? Anybody in the community? You'd like some late night reading, I recommend policies.
And they're, they are on our website as well. They're under policies considered for, or proposed policies on our website that you can go and access those before the board takes action at the third reading if you have any questions or concerns.
Okay, so there's no action needed at this time. And next we have the personnel report. Recommendations. Leslie Bailey, special needs I A at Riddle beginning September, two thousand and twenty-two, hourly rate of twelve fifty-nine. Krista Gardner, special needs I A, Riddle, beginning of school year through September, hourly rate twelve fifty-nine. Hannah Seward, Columbia Elementary Director of Daycare, hourly rate sixteen dollars. Harrison Corkos, R M S instructional assistant, hourly rate twelve fifty-nine. Beth Brady, maternity leave substitute for Mrs. Freeman, daily rate one hundred and forty dollars. Sue Perry, maternity leave substitute for Mrs. Overmeyer's ag class, daily rate one hundred and forty dollars. Alex Gutman, R H S science teacher, salary forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I thought we already employed him.
We did maybe two years ago and then he resigned and his, uh, we interviewed him and was offered a position.
Abram Farah, salary correction, experience changed to fourteen years, salary fifty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Alyssa Warner, Assistant Case Conference Coordinator of Special Education, hourly rate fourteen dollars, eighty-one cents. R H S C I A positions. Jamie Kirkwood, stipend two thousand. Amy Blackburn, stipend two thousand. Jennifer Snyder.
The band kids, they're having band camp this week.
I thought somebody brought it up, okay. Jennifer Snyder, stipend two thousand. Chad Thomas, stipend two thousand. Justin Atkinson, stipend two thousand. Hope Shali, stipend two thousand. Transfers. Mary Connor, moved from Riddle I A to an R M S I A. Wages will remain the same. Resignation. Melanie Blackburn, R M S food service, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two. Valia Gross, R M S custodial staff, effective July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Jamie Harstler, Riddle Elementary, Title One Instructional Assistant. Athletic recommendations. Alex Gutman, Head Varsity Cross Country Coach, stipend two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Travis Bonfiglio, Assistant Boys Soccer Coach, stipend one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Luke Sutton, Volunteer Assistant Boys Soccer Coach. Tyson Calista, Volunteer Assistant Boys Soccer Coach. Chad Pyo, Eighth Grade Girls Basketball Coach, stipend two thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Dylan Weaver, R M S Assistant Football Coach, stipend one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Athletic resignation. Eric Lynn, Coach, Coaching Staff for R C S C, effective immediately. Dan Bailey, R H S Boys Golf Coach. F M L A maternity leave. Nikki Overmeyer, maternity leave all of first semester. Kylie Freeman, estimated November twenty, twenty-two through the end of the school year. Did I miss anything?
He cut the, what did he?
With Eric Lynn, which is his coaching staff, is that?
He, Eric Lynn was cross country, is that correct, Oscar? Cross country.
Yeah, and Eric Lynn resigned, cross country, because we did that for a previous year.
Right. Any questions or comments regarding cross coun, or regarding our personnel report? Cross country, sorry, it's on my brain. All right, anything from the community? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a personnel report as read. Casey?
One second.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Superintendent's business.
So I know it's been a really busy summer and the next time we meet, we will already be in session. So it's pretty amazing to think that we're at that point in, in the year. So I'm going to ask each of the principals to share what they've been working on, some milestones met over the summer and then anything that they may need from myself or from the board to be successful and moving forward. So I know that Mrs. Murphy is out on a family vacation. So Mr. Hawes, I believe that you have both yours and R M S's. Is that okay? If you could share out those things you've been working on, some positives that have happened over the summer and anything you might need us to support you with.
So first for Mrs. Murphy, they're getting ready for Riddle to Middle and everything that goes into getting the year kicked off. They'll also, I don't think she listed it here, but she'll have intersession that week before school as well. Getting individuals caught up who are not.
Um, getting individuals caught up who are not registered yet, we began making those phone calls, both at, I imagine at all four buildings, actually, not just at the middle of high school. Um, something cool that she says has happened is purchasing all the marketing stuff to put in the parking lot, and as you, as you came in the building, you, hopefully you saw the zebra head in the middle, the two Rs on the outside of the windows. We got some new rugs, and we have a lot of other decals and things that we're gonna put up to kind of bring out the black and gold and the zebra and the old English R and make the buildings pop and the parking lot. We have a lot of banners that are gonna go up on the poles and so forth in the parking lot. Um, they should be in here within the next week. And she asked just for continued support and excitement for the new school year. Oh, sorry, I was supposed to read this first. Details for Riddle to Middle are August first for fifth graders from eight to eleven-thirty, and then sixth and seventh graders can come to get schedules, locks, and lockers from twelve to six. I'm sure I didn't do her justice, but that's what I got from middle school. Now, here at the high school, um, starting on July twenty-ninth, girls' golf practice starts, so we're, what, eleven, twelve days away from that, ten days away from that? Um, so that's coming pretty quick. Uh, football and, uh, band both have camps this week. Uh, youth girls' basketball camp, um, hosted by our girls' basketball program. I know soccer and volleyball and cross-country are beginning to ramp up their end of July practices, whether it's boys' or girls' soccer, getting ready for the fall activities. On August fifth, it is Fall Sports Exposure Night, where we do all the sports pictures, and then the teams kind of show off what they've got prepped for the upcoming year. Um, as Mrs. Murphy stated, we started a rebranding project, and we appreciate Mrs. Vance and Money Man's support in that, um, as we are, have purchased a significant amount of items, again carpets and decals and things to put up to kind of make the building flash. Um, as you walked in, hopefully you noticed, our hallways are no longer from the seventies. Uh, Mrs. Tewalt and a group of instructional assistants, thank you board for allowing them to work over the summer. They have painted every hallway minus what we now, that used to be called the tech hallway, that we're hoping to get Mrs. Vance to let them work over fall break to finish that one hallway. But upstairs, I believe they got done today. Downstairs is all done with the two-tone gray. It really has cleaned up the building, and it, it's really nice when you walk in the building now. Uh, Mr. Seager, one of our teachers, has, um, sanded down our goalposts. If you drive by, uh, you can, you can't miss them. They are, uh, bright now. When the lights are on them, they're gonna look really good. And on top of that, we, uh, the athletic department purchased a robot, so we should have the straightest lines in the conference when it comes to our, uh, lines being painted on the fields, which is pretty cool, he can program that robot. Um, we're gonna tax Kissler's sidekick, Nathan, and maybe do him like a, a zebra head or something that that robot can do out there. He's pretty fired up about that. We have registration up and running, as everybody does. Um, something that we are really excited about here, Joel's programming, um, over there, we're starting to get organized, um, we're learning where we have a few gaps, and we're starting to get machines. We're working hand in hand with some local businesses now to really bring on that advanced manufacturing and some of those engineering courses in collaboration with Ivy Tech and two or three local businesses, um, that could be really powerful, maybe not this fall, but the start of next fall. Um, this Thursday and Friday, I'm going down to be trained in the Civil Construction Pathway. Um, hopefully I'll be able to come back and ask you guys if I can start to begin to search for the right person to maybe lead that, again, with some local business support and, um, just local people who have a passion for that. We, probably with Mrs. Vance's encouragement, we have a lot of opportunity there to do, they don't, they, they say we don't have vertical construction, I don't remember, the horizontal construction stuff. I mean, they even talk about the guys that run the flags. If we can get them trained, that'd really help them, some things like that, so that's something that we're really pursuing, we're really excited about, hopefully to kick off, um, next fall as well. That's a big lofty goal, but I think we can meet it. Um, Skeeter and Jason have some safety training for us tomorrow at RMS, that I know Cassie, uh, Kevin and I, or not Cassie, Lori, Kevin and I are going to. If you got a chance to look at the parking lot, it's, it looks pretty good. They're putting that, what I call the second layer, blacktop on it today. I don't know what the official term of that is. There you go. And the biggest things that the public probably wants to know is on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, Kissler's department's gonna be ready to hand out all the MacBooks and iPads, and, uh, that's from seven to noon here at the high school, and then on August first, from four to six PM, eighth graders can come in, and our eighth grade teachers will be here, Lori and I will be here. They can bring their parents, they can walk around the building and, uh, check out where their classes are, get their lockers set up and everything like that. Eighth graders are welcome on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh as well, but August first from four to six is their designated time to be here without the other high schoolers in the building. Questions from you guys? I just appreciate everything you allow me to reach out and try and build relationships and bring great opportunities for our students to the corporation, so I appreciate that support. Anything?
Mr. Bernacki?
Um, just gonna echo a little bit what Oscar said. Building's looking really great. Appreciate that the IAs and other groups have been able to come through and work on that. That has been a tremendous help for us, and, uh, so that's looking really, really nice. Uh, met with the CIA today, we've been working over the summer on some of our curriculum, particularly math and writing, what's going on, and I invite the school board to our open house on August first. So we'll have our open house at Riddle, I think it's five to six-thirty. So, hop in if you'd like and, and see the families coming through. It's always an exciting time to kick off the beginning of the school year. So, um, we were talking about today, and it's two weeks from today is our open house, so what's happening?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bernacki? Mr. Snyder?
Well, we're still working on, uh, some daycare things. We, we got a lot of our equipment stuck in, uh, last week, and we're able to get that put together, um, so we've, uh, continuing to push forward and making sure that thing's a hundred percent ready to go. On, uh, Wednesday, we have, uh, will have interviews for the rest of the, uh, daycare positions, and, uh, so we should be able to fill those and be ready for our high school first base school for our teachers. Uh, I also met with my CIA coaches today. We and I had actually talked about that this morning, and, um, some of our focuses were school safety, um, report cards, we're still doing the standards-based and the skills-based report cards, and we've just kind of modified them a little bit, um, over the years, but nothing, nothing major, just, uh, just little tweaks here and there. We actually, we had a ton of things that we discussed, but it was good to have the CIA coaches in, uh, and they're excited to get ready to go. Office is very hard at work, and registration, calling parents, helping parents out. We've been staffed for a full week now, going into our second week for having people in the building to help, uh, with registration. We don't get a lot of people come in, usually it's emails, phone calls, and stuff like that. And I will say that in talking with my, uh, ladies in the office, they've said that registration this year has been, uh, by far the best in terms of parental, um, being able, being able to get on, log into their harmony, know what they're doing, um, that this is the best that they've ever seen. They've had the least amount of, uh, assistant calls and things like that. So I think that the online registration is slowly, um, uh, cycling down in terms of the amount of, uh, support we need on it, because parents are more used to it, you know, it's kind of becoming the norm. Uh, I'm personally working on updating our teacher handbook for Columbia, uh, just, it's just little updates, it's nothing that, um, needs any kind of, uh, major changes, there's no changes to our, our policies or anything like that. It's just a matter of, with the, as we get more new teachers in our, our building and things, I, I like for them to have something that's very up to date and ready to go, and, you know, over the, over the last six, seven, eight years, uh, we do things a little bit different, more, uh, attendance with harmony, we're not doing things like we did fifteen years ago with, you know, the hard copies and stuff. So I just, I, I feel like it's time for a good update for that handbook, so that's something I've just been personally working on for my staff. Shooter training tomorrow, uh, we'll kind of discuss that with, um, I believe we've got the, the local police department involved, the sheriff's department, and I know that the state police will also, um, provide it to that. We've got some minds in motion training going on on Wednesday, and I've got several staff members that are going to that. Intersection, intersection, intercession will be next week, and, uh, that'll be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and that's taking place at Riddle. Uh, we alternate buildings, you know, for the ease of transportation and other things, so, um, and then open house is August first as well, five-thirty to seven. You guys are welcome to come out, uh, hang out if you'd like. On Thursday, uh, Mrs. Vance is, uh, cooking out, uh, in front of Columbia. You guys are welcome to come by and grab you a burger. It is a true drive-through, so, uh, you can get out and hang out with us if you want, but I mean, there's, there is a actual car line right there for you to go through, bigger than anything in the Rogers.
Is this boasting this thing?
Yes, man. Okay.
Sorry.
Are you cooking too, Jason, or just Jana? I mean, no offense, I was just checking.
Oh, the administrators will tell you my cooking is offensive.
It's a schedule.
Do you pass hot tums with those waters?
I, I've never even, I've never even used it, so I don't know. I just have Miss Vance to get it there.
Gotcha.
So, um, no, everything else is going good. Uh, the only thing I need is just a quick reminder to Mrs. Vance and maybe Terry to make sure that those guys, why they have all that equipment over there, don't forget to get over and go in and patch up new areas of my building, so, um, or not my building, my driveway. Car line. Don't send them out.
The burger driver.
Not my driveway.
The driver, you want no flat tires.
Oh, geez.
Locking the burger driver.
And finally, before we conclude, I'm looking forward to meeting with all of the, uh, principals and directors, administrators across the district this Friday. We will have our final, um, push through to make sure everything's ready for the opening of the school year, and we're going to host that at Columbia, so all of the administrators have a chance to see the daycare and what that looks like, so that when their employees are talking about it, they, they can understand and visualize that as well. So, um, this Friday, what did we put up, four, eight, or nine o'clock? It will be all departments, and we'll make sure we are all in alignment, moving forward on the same page.
I would like to bring my bicycle over and test drive the parking lot. Yeah, sure. There you go. Always want to drive, ride my bike on a smooth surface. Anything else? Anything else from the board? Anything else from the community? Thank you all for your time this evening, and with that, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.